Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and those of you that are here with us in person, we welcome you. And for those of you this afternoon at your home or place of business or wherever you might be watching us on the county's Facebook page, we certainly want to welcome you and we thank you for supporting us and for being interested in what takes place in county government here in Randolph. You will be accessing this through the county's webpage, and tomorrow, this will be available on the county's YouTube for viewing at any time that makes your convenience. So for whatever way that you might be participating in our meeting this afternoon, we want to welcome you and thank you for that. And we officially call to order the May Meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. I guess before I, well, they're starting to call these kinds of meetings the new normal. I hope it doesn't become a permanent normal. I'm ready for a normal. I'm ready to go back to the, I don't want to say old normal, just a normal way of doing county business. And to see folks out here in our audience that are here, give of their time and their schedule to come and participate and sit in on our meetings, for whatever their interests might be. But we hope that this new normal goes away in a hurry and that the normal returns to the way we prefer to conduct county business and the way businesses all over this county prefer to conduct their business. And we'll have some more discussions along those lines a little bit later in our meeting tonight. So, thank you. I will say, before we have our invocation, we now have 251 coronavirus cases in Randolph County. Today, we had our fourth death in the county. So, things continue to move along. Last month, when we came to this April board meeting, we had 33 cases. So, from April Commissioners' meeting to today, we've gone from 33 to 251 cases. Two weeks ago today, we had 76 cases. So, in two weeks, we've gone from 76 to 251. So, those are concerns, and we want to continue to remember those families in prayer, not to prolong this, but we did have the prayer service yesterday at the courthouse, which I thought was very well organized and put together and managed in a very professional way. There was probably over 400 cars in that lot at the courthouse, and I did not see one single person that exited their car. And they were very respectful to their fellow man, and it was non-political. They prayed for those that were the sickness. They prayed for the leaders. They prayed for spiritual leaders. They prayed for those that are suffering economically in this county. So, and we thank the pastors that organized that and cooperated with us. I know the sheriff had some folks there in person to monitor the crowd, which their job was pretty easy. So, those of you that perhaps were there yesterday, those that helped put it together for all these, and we still want to give thanks. So, I'm going to, we'll sit so that the sound, I hope the sound's a little better, and we will stand for our pledge of allegiance. But let's power ahead for just a moment of silent prayer, and then I'll have a prayer to get our meeting started today. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful day, the beautiful weekend that we had. We thank you for this time of year as flowers bloom and the trees bring forth their growth, their new growth. And we're reminded of your presence. We're reminded of your majesty and your creativity in our lives. And we see that in our fellow man, dear Lord. We see those that continue to serve you and who want to be able to worship in spirit and in truth. And we just pray for your guidance. You've told us in your word that we should be thankful in all things, in all things to give thanks. And I emphasize "in." So many times, we thank you or ask for things, but we're told to be thankful in all things. And we're in a situation and circumstances that we've never experienced before in our life. People that, in many ways, are afraid of sometimes even to see a new day, not knowing what it might bring in their life, and as families struggle through this time. We ask thy presence upon those families, and as we go about the county business tonight, may we not take it lightly. May we always be mindful of those that we serve and a God that we serve. And so, we invoke your presence, whether in person here tonight or whether watching from home or wherever it might be, and all the families around this county. And we thank you, and we ask your presence upon our meeting tonight and the business that shall be conducted. Thank you for your many blessings, and pray for our families. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Thank you. Shall we stand?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all. We have had several public comments tonight that have been forwarded to us specifically for that purpose. So, I'm going to ask County Manager Hal to read those into the minutes at this time. Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This really is a new normal, but I hope I'll be glad when it gets back to the way we used to be able to do business because of the social distance. And when we advertised this public hearing, we gave notice to the public that if they wanted to provide public comments that would be presented to the board, that they could do that through email and through my office. And then, we would make sure that the commissioners not only had their public comment emails where they were requesting for public comments. You'll have the full emails in your packet later on to read. And due to the numbers of emails that we received, some of them were coming in later this afternoon. So, we extended the time that we had advertised for people to submit emails to my office for public comment. We extended that from 3:00 to 3:30, and so that we would try to get as many as we possibly can. And then Dana has told me that even after the 3:30 this afternoon limit, we were still receiving emails in our office. So, you will receive all the emails that we've received for public comment. But I will read the ones that we have received, but I will summarize those emails. I'll give you the name and then summarize what the individual was wanting to convey to you tonight for purposes of length of time, and also as a summary of what they're saying. But I want those people to know that their full emails are being made available to the county commissioners. The first email we received, and it's not surprising, was from Alan Ferguson. Alan is, lives in Liberty, and he was commenting tonight on two matters. One, he wanted to thank our health department and the county for its response to the pandemic. And he also was beginning to talk about that the county government should continue its efforts to assist the state in suppressing this disease. He was concerned about Randolph County numbers comparable to Greensboro and Guilford County and Charlotte when you look at it per capita. And he knows that as commissioners, you're familiar with these and other numbers. So, that many in Randolph County citizens are paying attention during these trying times, and he wants us to continue to follow what the state guidelines are during this pandemic. The next, we received an email from William Ballantyne for public comment. He was concerned about the sheriff's office and the budget process that we're using this year, which we're beginning to get into, particularly on the money, any monies that may be allocated to the sheriff for the continuation of his garage. And Mr. Ballantyne was wanting the county to look at that closely during this budget process. And you have the full copy of his email. It will be in your packet. Next, we received an email from the Sunset Avenue Church of God, and signed by their board. And again, they were requesting that the letter be read at the public comment period, and it will be entered into the record with all these emails that we received. And they're thanking the county commissioners for all that the county and the board is doing to address the pandemic and what we, actions we've tried to take. It's time to put an end to some of these practices, they believe. It's time to open our state and our county. And they mentioned that the citizens of Randolph County have rights, and they feel that these rights have been trampled on by the governor through some of the actions that have been put in place by the governor. And the church is asking that the county, if we could take action, should begin to open up the county, our business, and trust our citizens to continue on in a safe environment like what they have been without restrictions that they feel are unconstitutional. And this, his letter, which you have the full copy, was signed by their board there at the church. Travis Cook from West Ashboro Church of God, he's the pastor there, and he wanted to also thank the board for a couple of things. One, for allowing the service last night here at the courthouse. And he's also, they're asking that restrictions be eased so that churches can begin to meet again, and while following social distancing and following all the proper procedures. They just feel that the economy, many in their church are being hurt by the close down of our economy, and they're asking that that be within authority of the commissioners opened up. We received an email from Todd Daniel, that's Faith Christian School, and his public comment was what a blessing last night was at the courthouse with all those people that came to pray. And he knows these are difficult times, and there's a lot of pressure on being felt by all the commissioners and our citizens. And his email was that we don't have to go as far as other counties where a prayer meeting like we had last night would have never happened. He asked for, may God give you wisdom and discernment as you help lead our county. We received an email from Ann Bennett. Ann was saying that the governor, that we should continue to follow the governor's mandates through his emergency resolution. And it's better to wait just a little bit longer until the pandemic begins to cease because our numbers continue to go up. Roger Green sent an email. He's requesting that the board of commissioners base any decision that you might make in regard to local actions on the pandemic using sound, scientific, and medical advice. The commissioners should not be swayed by a vocal minority who downplay the seriousness of the current situation for self-serving reasons. He's asking that you consider the state guidelines moving forward. Kim Fitzgimmens, Fitzgimmens, has requested that county commissioners not open the county too soon and continue to follow the guidelines established by the governor. Jean Borreth, through her email, is, please don't open Randolph County too soon. And she has several concerns there that she mentions in her email, but primarily is to continue following the guidelines that the state has presented to the counties. Denise Rinaldi, she's over 65 and a diabetic, and she's urging the commissioners not to reopen Randolph County until the numbers have begun to go down in Randolph County. And she feels this should be for, at least for a 14-day period, showing the numbers going down in Randolph County. Ruth Scanlon, she's, her email is about opening Randolph County to life, as unusual as she calls it. The current number of cases in this county alarms her, and she feels the county should continue to follow the state guidelines without doing anything to jeopardize the people's health. Reynolds Neely, has, his email says that we should follow the president and the governor's guidelines, and the numbers that we see now are not in line with any loosening or opening strategies for Randolph County. Joni Langer, through her email, she believes that, please extend business closures for at least a few more weeks until we have this terrible outbreak under control. She's asking the county not to do anything to loosen state guidelines as we currently follow. Rebecca McGarian, she urges the county commissioners to follow the guidance of the governor and the General Assembly and not attempt to reopen too quickly and keep enforcing the state guidelines. Diane Hubbard urges the commissioners not to be hasty in reopening Randolph County information and follow the State Department of Health as we move forward on these guidelines. Kathy Snow, is a, there's a document that, meeting that we should follow, meaning the state guidelines, and that masks or not being required as they should be, and we should make sure that social distancing is maintained. She's in the at-risk group, and she won't be going out amongst the general public until there's a working vaccine. So, she does not believe in loosening any of the regulations for our churches or our businesses. Michael Hardeman, Michael's email is to express his opinion on the idea of easing lockdown restrictions. He thinks, he mentions that Ashboro's been a hotspot for the virus and that we should continue following the state's guidelines for these, the virus, and not loosen any of those up. We have from Todd Daniel with Faith Christian School. He's, again, was, he knows that his email says, you've been barbarded, bombarded with emails from a group to keep this county on lockdown. He believes it's to be a reaction to the prayer meeting last night, and he wants the board of commissioners to stand with the majority of the people in Randolph County, so that we can go back to church and begin to work with common sense. Cheryl Winslow was asking the county to keep its stay-at-home guidelines per the federal government and the CDC, and not to open up too quick business and other activity in the county. Laura Burns, she's a citizen of Randolph County who works in the healthcare field. She urges the commissioners to research the effects of a viral load on the county and how that plays on death, and to follow the state guidelines. Diane Cavoli has emailed, and she, in her email, says, stay at home and social distancing works. And she wants the county to not do anything that would risk lives, further lives in Randolph County, and urges the county to continue following safe guidelines mandated by the state and the federal government. Eve Keller, she has, thanks the commissioners for careful consideration on how to proceed in these times, and she would prefer to proceed with caution other than to move too quickly and jeopardize what we've accomplished so far. So, she's asking the board to continue to follow the guidelines by the governor and the president. Louis Bonsack, she says, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and she's asking the county to not loosen restrictions and to continue following established practices outlined by the governor. Tammy Gordon, she urges the commissioners to use good, sound, scientific judgment in determining when to open, reopen all our businesses. And again, you have the full emails there in front of you. Jay Hubbard, he wanted to ask the commissioners to use caution and not reopen Randolph County too quickly. Megan Crody, please reconsider opening Randolph County too soon. She thinks the county, we should continue on the current policies that are underway. Suzie Scott is from Ashboro, and she's thanking the commissioners for providing a venue for public comment like what is being done tonight. She's concerned that Randolph County remains a hotspot in the state, and that we should not be too quick to relax these regulations that have been in place until we have information showing a reduction in the virus. Clyde Faust, he's received information about the, that our statistics in Randolph County continue to be the highest. It makes no sense to forego the scientific information our governor and the President of the United States is using to request that we keep these restrictions in place. Debbie Pike, she's writing in advance of making this meeting scheduled for today to discuss reopening of businesses. It is clear that Randolph County has not met even the most minimum of prerequisites needed to take steps to allow more public contact, and she's asking you to maintain the state, what the governor has required. Vicki Wilson of Ashboro, she opposes any reopening of the county and our churches while any of our people are sick and infected with this pandemic. Robert Shackelford says, we're not opening face-to-face classes at Randolph Community College until it is safe. Period. Josh Brown, Josh is, please accept this public comment in response to issues that some of the, they have heard that the county intends to open Randolph County. He feels that's too quick, and we should continue to follow state and the governor's guidelines. Linda Hartford, she lives in Ashboro. Again, she's, she thinks any attempt to reopen the county and our churches beyond what's currently being done would sabotage what the governor is trying to do in keeping a, keeping the virus down. She feels it would be reckless and foolhardy. Neil Allen, he thinks it's too soon to reopen businesses until we have more testing in place. Larry Plon, let's see, Larry Thomas, Mr. Thomas is writing to urge the commissioners not to adopt any resolution that may have been submitted to reopen the county or our businesses or our churches. He feels that's too soon. Scott Hager, he, again, is, it's too early to reopen, is the essence of his email. Pastor Boyd Beverly, he wanted to thank the county commissioners for the use of the courthouse last night for this prayer event. And he wants you to remember the citizens that are struggling as you make decisions on opening businesses and our churches. Elworth Cheek is, he knows the county's anxious to get things reopened in the county, but he thinks we need to take more time to look at the impact the virus is having before we make any changes beyond what may be recommended by the governor and the state. Melinda Lamb, she's 74-year-old resident of Randolph County, and again, she's concerned that if any action is taken by the county to loosen up regulations that are already in place by the state and the federal government, she feels we would be putting people's lives in danger. Neil Robbins, it's time for Randolph County to stand up and lead on the coronavirus response. He hopes the board will encourage, will look closely at the executive orders issued by the governor. And he says, one-size-fits-all approach is inappropriate, and Randolph should do what it can to free us from the unnecessary edicts imposed on us by bureaucrats and politicians in Raleigh. You have his full email as part of this packet. A Pickens with no name has said they believe the county should not make any changes in the governor's emergency declaration. Sandy Campbell is, doesn't like the idea of a resolution that she has seen, a potential resolution about religious freedom. She said, this smacks in a way to force freedom of religion and the public's right for health and safety. And she does not want the county to make any actions that would loosen up the current standards. Tony and Julie Parks, they wanted to say thank you to the county commissioners for allowing Christians in our county to meet at the courthouse last night for drive-in prayer. They said, it's uplifting to see support from the county commissioners as we pray for the Lord to heal the county. Chris Dorsett, thank you for allowing the prayer meeting at the courthouse last night. Please reopen the county as soon as possible. Corey Shremshire is, they thought, she, he thinks, never thought our liberties and freedoms would be taken away in the U.S. like it has now. And he thinks it's time to open our businesses and our churches. Elaine Faust, she, she wanted to express her thanks for allowing us to have the prayer time at the courthouse last night. And she feels, she feels opening up Randolph County, she's, she's been one of those that's been deemed nonessential. And she said, it's hurting her finances and her ability to provide for herself and her family. Jeff Joyce, again, is an appreciation to the county commissioners for all the hard work that y'all have done. And he wants to share his gratitude for allowing the church's service to lead our county in prayer last night. And he appreciates all that the county commissioners are trying to do. And he's with the Association Mission Strategies of the Randolph Baptist Association. Stephen Kenny of Greensboro, he was in attendance at the courthouse prayer, and he wanted to thank the commissioners for allowing that. And he asks the commissioners to stand by our constitution and the rights that so many people have fought for, that has been taken away from them. Larry May, he thanks you for your leadership and by allowing the prayer at the courthouse last night. And you've proven God is essential in the deliverance from this virus. And he thanks the board for that. George Trolinger, again, was, his email is thanking the board for allowing the prayer meeting last night at the courthouse. David Lambert, again, thanking the board for the meeting at the courthouse last night in expression of appreciation for what is being done. He's saying, the current economic climate is not sustainable, and people are hurting. Gwen Dorsett, again, is a thanks for the prayer meeting last night at the courthouse. People, help us get our freedom to worship back. Let's begin to reopen Randolph County. Gregory Moore, again, was thankful for the prayer at the courthouse last night, and wanted to express their appreciation to the county commissioners on that. Tracy Leonard, again, the prayer at the courthouse was much appreciated, and she thinks it's time to reopen our city and our county. Debbie Kennedy, she's not in support of the proposed resolution that she has seen, and she believes the county should continue to follow the policies outlined by the governor and by the President of the United States. And last, Ramona Dula. And last, Ramona Dula, "We need to open back up for business. We can't continue like this. Do something, please." So, Mr. Chairman, that was a very brief summary of those emails that were submitted for public comment and you have the full email and all, all the ones that we were, that came in after 3:30 will be part of the record.
Right. Thank you, Hal. All right. Think that serves this point out, the job before us in making decisions relative to go forward for this county and the issues that, that confront us and clearly it's not a, it's not an open show case, but I don't think the current situation is, is doing the best for our county in, in many ways. All right, our consent agenda. Anyone have an item there that you wanted to pull out? I have a motion to approve.
With approval.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those who are no, consent agenda is approved. First item of new business this evening is aging services bid. Mark Kinsley's here, I see Duffy Johnson with him, so you're up, guys.
Good evening, Chairman Frye, Board of Commissioners and Senior County Staff. It's indeed a pleasure to be here this evening with recommendations regarding the home and community care block grant funding for the new fiscal year 2021. First of all, though, let me thank you and all of our Randolph County departments for what you're doing to lead us through this unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic. Randolph Senior Adults is very appreciative of the leadership provided during this time. Since the Randolph County Board of County Commissioners has designated Randolph Senior Adults as the lead agency for senior services, my position as executive director includes the role as chair of the Aging Services Planning Committee. Duffy Johnson is with me as well, who serves as the vice chair of the Aging Services Committee and is also the chair of the Finance Subcommittee. He's here with me because since I represent one of the providers that's being recommended, we want to make sure there's transparency and that everything is handled the way it should be. I am a non-voting member as the chairman of Aging Services and when it comes time to evaluate providers and allocations, that's handled by the Finance Subcommittee and I'm not involved in that process. So, later on, if you have questions, we'll bring Duffy up here to answer those. Let me update you regarding the documents in your packet as we just learned late Thursday evening that all counties in the Piedmont Triad and likely the state are facing a budget allocation reduction for fiscal year 2021. This reduction is related to the fact that our state has not yet approved the budget. If you'll see the document provided prior to this meeting by Board Clerk Crisco, it has the revisions that we learned about late on Thursday. Randolph County's new allocation will now be $829,949, which is a reduction of $23,964 from the current allocation of $853,913. Since we start the block grant request for proposal in February, the documents in your package reflect incorrected amounts due to late notice of the allocation reduction. In addition, the Aging Services Planning Committee will need to use its May meeting to reapprove the new amounts. The first document from Aging Services includes the recommendation of the awarding of a two-year term for the home and community care block grant. The two-year term will run from July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2022. The document that Clerk Crisco gave you, just to clarify, the recommendations of providers and allocations are as follows. Randolph Senior Adults, $542,484 for the services of adult daycare, congregate nutrition, home-delivered meals, information and options counseling, and transportation. Randolph Senior Adults will take the full allocation reduction and leave regional consolidated services unchanged. We are doing this due to the upcoming release of funding under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. We have been instructed by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council that the funding for meal programs under the Families First Act should replace the reduction of funding under the block grant. With Randolph Senior Adults taking the full block grant reduction, but with the expectations those funds will be replaced, it keeps regional consolidated services at their full allocation amount. We're also recommending regional consolidated services be allocated $287,465, which is the same as the current year, for the services of in-home aid levels 1, 2, and 3, and housing and home improvement. Therefore, we have a total Randolph County allocation of $829,949, reduced again from the current year by $23,964. These revised numbers are the amounts we are asking you to take action upon this evening. There will be a document for Chairman Frye and Finance Officer Massey to execute upon board action and after the Aging Services Planning Committee meets later in the month. This Department of Aging and Adult Services form will be provided in your consent agenda package for the June Board of Commissioners meeting. So, at this point, I would take any questions or if I can't answer them, we'll bring Duffy up here.
2021 was showing the 853, so the revised number is for the same fiscal year?
Is, is for 2020, 2021. Yes, the separate, the separate form that wasn't in your packet, if that's the one you refer to, it has the corrected numbers.
Okay. All right, that was, yeah. So, it's 829,949?
That's correct.
Okay.
Your comment about the Families First Care Act?
That is a, that's a federal program that will provide meal funding and we're expecting to receive, allocated to Randolph County for meals, an amount at least equal to the reduction that's coming under the block grant. That's why, instead of us taking part and regional consolidated taking part, they would not be able to reclaim any of that through the Families First. So, if we take it all at Randolph Senior Adults, then regional consolidated is not penalized in this process.
Okay, so you, so none of that is reflected in these figures?
No, we don't know those numbers yet. We've just been told by Piedmont Triad Regional Council, it should offset the reduction.
Yes, we had a meeting the other day, so the stimulus money will cover that shortage?
That's what we've been told, yes, sir.
And that'll come to you in the same way?
I'm sorry?
Does that pass through to you in the same way or is that going to come through us to you?
It'll, it'll come through, my understanding is it will be administered by Piedmont Triad Regional Council. I don't think the county will administer those funds. I think it'll just-
Oh, no, but I'm saying, but it goes directly to-
That's, that's correct, to us.
That was my question.
Yes. Our, our volumes, our meal programs, and I'll get to be back for you, in front of you in June for the budget presentation, but our volumes are through the roof even before the COVID pandemic. We're up 20% through the first eight months of this fiscal year. Last year, we did 76,000 meals in Randolph County last fiscal year. We're on pace to do 91,000 meals through February and March was the largest meal month in the history of Randolph Senior Adults with 10,500 meals. So, 10,500 in March. I expect April, as we're tabulating our numbers, I expect April to be about 12,000 meals.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Well, again, it's, it's reflective of aging population. It also, during the COVID-19, I think what we're seeing is people, especially congregate folks that are accustomed to coming into one of our centers, they may come in two days a week, three days a week, they may go get lunch out, they're not comfortable doing that now, so they're asking for the full complement of meals that we're delivering. And so, somebody who might eat two meals a week, we're now doing five meals for them. We have, we have shifted to, we're delivering 10 frozen meals every two weeks so that everyone gets a nutritious meal and also we reduce the exposure of having a volunteer standing on their front porch delivering meal every day. And through the, we've, we've done that four times since we closed our centers on March 18th and we're right at 17,000 meals we've delivered since late March through the month of April.
Are you changed, you changed suppliers for your meals?
Yes, we did.
Is that working okay?
It's been fantastic. We're now using Golden Corral out of Lexington. We anticipate at some point, the COVID obviously has thrown that off, but they want to move that to our local Golden Corral. But right now, the catering is being handled out of Lexington. The meal quality has gone up greatly, number of complaints have been reduced to very, very small and, and they have been fantastic during the COVID-19. We have another type of meal we could have offered, which is a shelf-stable. We do that during inclement weather so that if you lose power, you don't have to heat, it's fruit cups and breakfast bars and peanut butter crackers and things like that. I just couldn't see people eating 10 days of shelf-stable meals. Well, our previous provider is not able to get frozen meals out to their agencies. So, our shift to Golden Corral was fortuitous because we would be in a world of hurt with our seniors if we couldn't provide 10 frozen meals.
So, it's been with Lexington from day one since the change?
Yes, they're in Lexington and the plan is to move it to the local Golden Corral, but because of the COVID, it's kind of delayed that and now with our volumes having gone up, they're, they don't push that to Ashboro until Ashboro's ready to take the catering side on.
Other questions? All right.
And those numbers, you know, that you guys are serving our citizens where?
I would mention, our CATS has not missed a day. We're still running trips because we can, we can keep our groups up to 10 or less on the vans, we just decide how many people are going to ride and, you know, we, we run dialysis trips and that's life or death and so we have not missed a day since we closed the centers that our CATS has continued to run, so.
And those folks that are delivering, that all, they've continued to work and?
We're, we're delivering meals through staff, community volunteers, and then our existing volunteers that are under the age of 65. 65 is the most, and over the most at risk and so our current volunteers that are under 65 years of age and then our congregate folks come, we do curbside, they come and, and pick up the meals and of course, we're gloved and masked and all those things, but, so we would ask for an approval of the allocations and the providers as you have in the single document tonight.
This is an action item? All right, you want us to approve this item?
That's correct. The 829,949 provided to the two organizations as listed.
Don't let, I make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion or questions? Mark, Duffy, anything you want to say?
I, I, just to say thank you to the county staff, Lisa Warner and Will for their help in getting our FDP put together and getting it out, organizing things and were doing that for us. They were a big help and we really appreciate their involvement, help with that process.
I thank you. I had lunch with these two guys a few weeks ago and they do a good job of keeping us informed and I appreciate the respect that you're showing.
Great.
Thank you. Other discussion? Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Aye and oppose no, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is sale of surplus vehicle.
Thank you very much for allowing me to turn our attention to something besides COVID-19 for just a minute, but this is still very much part of our emergency response in the county. As you know, all of you know or have met Dr. Sapira, who's our medical director. Dr. Sapira is part of a group at Wake Forest Baptist Health and his colleagues are all responsible for an EMS fellowship program and it's one, there's only about half across the nation that have these programs and Baptist was in the forefront of starting that. What that is, it takes emergency physicians who are already board certified and it brings their focus to pre-hospital care, so for our paramedics and our EMTs. So, one thing that we have done is we, the sheriff was kind enough to transition a vehicle from the sheriff's office over to us for the doctors, particularly Dr. Sapira, but for the other fellows who work in the county to use when they're in the county. So, they use these calls and they actually respond on emergency calls when they're here each week. Dr. Sapira suggested that the, the other doctors need a vehicle to use when they're doing those types of things in their counties as well, but primarily the vehicle would remain in use for Randolph County. We have a 2005 Dodge Charger, again, that was transferred, it's an old patrol vehicle that was transferred over to us. Wake Forest has said that they've agreed that we could sell the vehicle to them for a dollar, they would maintain the vehicle, it would be available to all the doctors that are in the fellow program.
2015?
2015, I'm sorry. And the VIN number's on the memo as well. So, what I would like to do is, is to support their program and what we get from them for the money that we pay each year and what this vehicle would allow, is we get, Dr. Sapira, he here each week, we get two doctors who are in the fellowship program each week that come in and they teach our paramedics, they run calls, they sign off on all of our protocols and our operating procedures for the clinical side. So, we get a lot of support from them. We want to be able to, to support that their overall program as well. So, you see listed in the memo, if you have it, Dr. Sapira, of course, Dr. Darrell Nelson, who's over the program, Dr. Nick Petit and the others who come, are currently coming, would use the vehicle. My request is to sell the vehicle to them for a dollar, which is essentially we're donating the vehicle, but for DMV transfer, you need a value to, to make the title creep through. It's allowable by North Carolina General Statute 168, 266 and I am requesting you consider that. I think it would be a benefit that they continue to maintain the vehicle, but it's still used here in Randolph County.
What's he been using? I mean, his own vehicle or?
Mm-hmm, yes. Or he rides with us to calls when he's here each week.
We've been maintaining it.
Only for a short time until he brought up here. But it wouldn't restrict him just to Randolph, he could use it for other things, but he will be using it here every week when he's here.
Okay, any questions? Have a motion?
Make motion that we-
Transfer the vehicle to-
That we approve the sale of this surplus vehicle, this 2015 Dodge Charger to Wake Forest Baptist Health School of Medicine for $1. I think it is most appropriate. I'm glad that we are able to do it. Hope that in the future we may can do this again, because it sounds like a valuable, valuable service.
And authorize the purchasing officer to do the transfer paperwork.
I, I, we're fortunate to have-
Forgot to say it.
We're fortunate to have Dr. Sapira working with us for four years.
We are.
That's been a tremendous asset for us.
Yeah, and like I said, we get not only him every week, but we get, one or two fellows are always here. We have Dr. Petit currently, he's here through June and then we get another doctor and possibly two doctors and they come weekly as well. They teach our in-service training, it's a good deal.
Yes, you have a second? Yes, all right. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those who are no, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, Hal, you going to, what's up today?
I was, I want to let the board know, we looked at the statistics on April 6th, we had 33 confirmed cases today, we had 251, we have four deaths, we had six, we have six county employees that also have contracted the, the virus. In all those instances, because of the, the controls that we now have in, in place with the county, those employees were identified quickly and, and put in quarantine and we're real confident there wasn't community exposure. there wasn't community exposure as a result of those employees. I wanted to give you that number. Our YouTube videos, we produced 12, and you have in your memo for me the different areas the county government that we tried to include in those videos. Over, almost 18,000 people have looked at these 12 videos as they're put on YouTube, and they stay out there where citizens can come back and look at them, and that'd be the same way we're doing with the commissioners' meetings now on YouTube. I just wanted to let you know tomorrow, we have another video in addition to the chairman and the public health director. We're going to have a public health nurse talk to the community about our WIC program, women, infants, and children, and the nutritional challenges they have for the less fortunate. And Thursday, I'm going to have Mark Hensley with the Senior Adults Association on our video. He'll be talking about what they're doing with our elderly population during this pandemic. So we're real pleased with the way our videos are going, and it's been a real success so far. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Before we go to our last item there, I'll make a couple of comments. We had our state board meeting for North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Friday afternoon, a Zoom board meeting, of course. I go down to the House office in the conference room, and on that big screen, if anyone can see, all the people, not all of them, but a good portion, there's about 48 or 49 board members plus staff and other committee chairs, et cetera, around the state. And a lot of the discussion had to do with stimulus money, had to do with our state association, our state. At that time, the General Assembly was still discussing the bill that they passed Saturday. And in the federal stimulus money that was sent to North Carolina, three of the counties, based on their population in excess of 500,000, that was Mecklenburg, Wake, and Guilford, who's our neighbor, their money was sent directly to them. And the point I want to make, and this is the way the federal government sent the stimulus money to those counties and cities. The city of Charlotte, the city of Charlotte got $115 million. Mecklenburg County, that's bearing all the pressure of the coronavirus and the Health Department, public schools, ambulance service, the whole works, they got 40. That's the way the federal government views the cities relative to counties. The city of Charlotte got 115 million, Mecklenburg County got 40. What we've been doing with our local representatives and all this enforcing, you know, the county is the one paying the school, we fund schools, cities don't. We fund the Health Department, and mental health, and social services, and all those things that cities don't do. So in that bill Saturday, each county, some of them don't meet the threshold, every county got a base of $500,000. Out of a 300, at that point, and I don't know what the final number was, but at that time, it's 350 million for local governments from the CARES Act. But then the remainder of that money, the 300 million, so 500 of 100 counties is 50 million, the remainder of 300 million would be distributed on a per-capita basis. So Will and I talked, I think y'all all got a copy of this. It was forwarded last week. If you didn't, we'll make sure. It outlines that bill, the Senate version, the House. And Saturday morning, there was some revisions to this. At the time of our board meeting, there was discussion about $25 million to rural hospitals. In the House budget, that was included. The Senate had no money for rural hospitals. They think there's enough money being sent directly to the hospitals through the federal stimulus money. I did, I do understand that in the final package, there was some money for rural hospitals. Our problem is, relative to Randolph, they are already, they're already in bankruptcy. So any stimulus money, including the one and a half million they got a couple of weeks ago, any stimulus money goes into the bankruptcy process as an asset of a hospital and is distributed to the creditors of the hospital, one of the largest of which is Cone Hospital that backed out and left us in a lurch. But Cone Hospital will get more benefit from federal stimulus money than our own hospital will. So just, I just make you aware of that. A lot of the discussion had to do with counties and what they're doing relative to the reopening process. There was a sort of a warning of such. You know, our state president is Kevin Austin from Yankton County. First vice president is Frank Williams, chairman of Brunswick County Commissioners. It was just cautioning that we follow some deep process, take our time and understand what we're doing. Relative to the association budget, the proposal that's been drafted will have a dues reduction. Our dues, our dues are not that much to the state association, so that's not a lot of money. But there was also some discussion about a dues rebate. There was not any money mentioned to that. Includes no pay increases, all pay is frozen, no May increases, and for the foreseeable future, all of our board meetings will be one-day events. We typically held them on Friday afternoon, Saturday mornings. And used to, the fall meeting would be in the mountains, and that was the budget meeting, and that was where we, I don't want to say indoctrinate, but where we addressed new commissioners and new commissioner board members. And then in the spring, we had one toward the coast. During the recession, nine or 10 years ago, they flipped that, because we got better rates in the mountains in the summer, and we got better rates in the beach in October. Well, now, and then the meetings in between, we always held them in Raleigh. We actually had one or two in Greensboro, which was central. But those are just some cost-cutting things that they're doing. They did, they did vote, the board voted to finalize the demolition of the Albert Coats Building, so they can begin a planning for what would be a revenue-producing new facility on that property. If y'all have been to Raleigh, I think most of you have been on a committee or two. So they demolished the Albert Coats and start the construction of a replacement facility that will generate rental lease income for the association and for the League of Municipalities. So those are the sort of the highlights of that meeting, and I want to make you aware of that. And anything else there? I will say, we've had two board meetings in three weeks, and we get updated. I think you're all included on those NACO alerts and all.
Everybody's included on that.
Yeah. All right. So that brings us down to some discussion on the proposed May 8th executive order related to reopening North Carolina under Phase 1. If you're not familiar, Phase 1 would be to modify the stay-at-home policy, to grant more leeway, more travel outside of the home, and travel for, you know, now supposedly it's supposed to be only for those essential reasons, but now they're broadening that, the stay-at-home, so you can travel for commercial activity, more businesses to be open, to ensure that any open stores practice social distancing, hygiene, cleaning protocols, and symptomatic screening of any employees, and to educate employees and workers to avoid misinformation, giving misinformation. It keeps in effect the limiting of 10 people. It reopens the parks without any limits. It recommends masks if the six-foot distancing is not in place. In other words, if you can, if the facility can accommodate a six-foot spacing, they don't require masks. Continues to encourage teleworking from home, working from home puts in place, and I think if there's anything in any of this process, but certainly by now, we all agree, to rigorous restrictions on these nursing homes. But what's happening in the nursing homes is the employees are bringing it in. The one over in Ramseur, it came from an employee, who was also the one that was working part-time at the county clerk courts office, same person.
Well, employees move around on weekends. You know, it's their time off, and so they move around, and when they come back in, even though they wear masks and practice safety protocol, you know, just as they move around on weekends, they can come in contact with someone who has it, who does not know it. You know, we know so much now that people that are asymptomatic, you know, can have it, no symptoms, and yet they can test positive for it and carry it to somebody else. And so then, these workers don't know that of it, and they carry it in, and even though they wear masks and follow safety protocol, I mean, our health department has answered lots of questions from them and gone in-person to help when requested, and I have been assured that our long-term care facilities in Randolph County are taking every precaution, but it really isn't, it really will be a miracle if we don't face that in our facilities.
Big part of my issue with this, and I want y'all to chime in here, but, you know, I talked on one of our videos last Sunday, and my wife and I, we try to get out of the house. We don't get out of the car, but we get out of the house, and we get in the car and ride and just through the country. That's what we like. No interstate, we get off the, we get on the backroads. But Sunday morning a week ago, there was such an obvious, I think observing of these social distancing issues and gatherings at multiple churches that we went by. We saw the event yesterday at the courthouse, 400-plus cars. Not one person got out of a car. But Saturday afternoon, we went to Lowe's, and we went to Walmart, and you could, we had to ride around to find a park. And we talk about essential business, and a lot of the mom and pops and these small businesses, their livelihood is essential. And, you know, Walmart can endure this thing for months. They have, they have the financial ability to do that. That's something that I, that really concerns me. Phase 2, which under the, I think these phases are in accord pretty much, if not exact, with the president's Phase 1, 2, and 3. Phase 2, which is projected to be in two to three weeks, it lifts completely the stay-at-home order. It opens restaurants on a limited basis. I've talked to a couple of folks that have restaurants, and the one that, I ate breakfast every morning, that in order to comply, they probably would just take reservations so they could control who comes, and somebody comes and can't get in. It opens bars, fitness centers, personal care, barber shops, hairdressers, et cetera, and businesses that can follow the safety protocols. It allows a gathering at houses of worship in Phase 2. I'll tell you this, I had a church there in Artsdale, the minister called me last week, and he said, "I'm not asking permission. I'm telling you, we're going to have church Sunday, pretty much in a normal way." So, you know, some are taking that on themselves, but Phase 2 allows the gathering at houses of worship. It increases the number of people allowed at those gatherings. It opens all public playgrounds, and again, it restricts those nursing homes. So, you know, it would be good to have Phases 1 and 2 all at the same time. Now, the governor said last Friday, and he said at 11:30 today, when he signed that piece of legislation that they passed Saturday, that he still plans to reopen the state this Friday with Phase 1. So I think our discussion is, what do we do following that action that he doesn't do that we think ought to be done, and what we would do, or how that would react to the governor's orders? Anything that we would do after that would be, we would be taking, we would be putting that in place over the typical order of authority. So those are sort of the issues we have, and the Phase 1, those are the things that would be included. That doesn't mean that he couldn't include some of Phase 2. And I have had some conversations in particular about churches there, so. Phase 2, Phase 2 still restricts to 50, does it, Doc? Well, it doesn't say. It just says it increases. Now, for some gatherings, you can have 50 right now. So this just says increase the number of people allowed at gatherings. That could speak to the 10. I know in the case of funerals, funeral home, you can have up to 50.
I think in Phase 1, it's still at 10, but in Phase 2, it goes to 50.
It goes.
And then Phase 3.
Things don't say 50.
And I looked at the presidential guidelines and the state guidelines, and there is some, there's similarities, but there are also some differences in there, too. Primarily, a lot of, it's length of time between phases. The White House does not really address a length of time, other than that you meet the criteria, based on what I was, what I've seen.
But Phase 2, let me get this straight.
It defines it as reduced capacity, but I don't know if it gives it an exact number.
The email we got does not have an exact number. It just says it increases the number of people for a gathering. What was your question, Max? I'm sorry. Phase 2 is opens restaurants, correct? Phase 1? Yes. Phase 2, Phase 2 opens restaurants.
Under districting guidelines and?
There are some limitations there. They can't open for business. Right.
In dining in, yeah.
Right. I thought it was a little, no, not, really wasn't amusing, but interesting that the House proposal that in the legislation Saturday allowed for the sale of two mixed drinks per carryout order. Now, it did survive the cut. It got cut, but two mixed drinks with every takeout order, so you hand in a guy in a car two mixed drinks. But in their infinite wisdom, that's, it didn't survive, but.
So if there's two orders, is it four drinks?
Well, you know, you could go in one car, and Diggy could go in the next one, and you could get four.
What happens if you eat family style? What happens if you eat family style?
Yeah, yeah. But those are the issues. And I know there was some reference, and I know I've talked to Commissioner Kidd today, and he sent, he sent to us an edited version of another resolution. And I talked to.
I had a couple corrections at the back there, I think, you know, where I was kind of.
That was, that was not a part of our agenda, and it was not a part of our discussion today relative to passing. Now, I think depending on what the governor does Friday, I could see us having a call meeting sometime in the following week to, to address the other matters.
Chairman, he said that as early as tomorrow, he might be making an announcement about this. So did I understand that right?
Yeah.
When he did that bill, I was, I was really reading my Fox 8 thing, because I worked a funeral this afternoon.
Sure.
He did say maybe tomorrow, but certainly.
By Friday.
By the middle of the week, they would have details on what, what phase one would mean.
Well, it's possible, it's possible that what was proposed initially, you know, may have been adjusted. I mean, I know everybody feels these very same things. I had a citizen send an email and said, you don't understand what it's like. And I sent the email back and I said, oh, yes, yes, I do. I have a son that's a small business owner, I have a son who's a doctor who works with an at-risk population. I have parents in an assisted living facility. And I have a son who's working from home in an essential business, and his wife is pregnant. And he is going to request that even if they are allowed to go back to work, to be able to work from home for her safety and well-being until the baby comes. My first grandchild, everybody, by the end of May. So I hear these discussions in my own family. And so I do have an understanding of what people are going through on every side of the discussions. And it's unprecedented, it's not easy. I think intelligent people will use all the data at our disposal, at our disposal, and then admit, we don't know. We are listening to experts because I think you, you listen to the people who, you know, who know what they're doing. I watched Governor Cooper today, a question came up about the parks. And he just stepped away from the microphone and motioned for Mandy Cohen to come up and address that because he knew that was outside of his area of expertise. So I think that we listen to the expertise, that we, that we try to use wisdom, and then we admit, we don't know. There's so much about this that we don't know. Everything we know now, or a lot of what we know now, we did not know six or eight weeks ago. You know, six or eight weeks ago, I had a terrible cold. I didn't have a single system, a single symptom that matched the list of symptoms for COVID. Today, as I look at that list of symptoms, I did. So that could have been it. I mean, I had sense enough to stay home and not carry that to anybody. You're welcome, Maxton. But, and the rest of you, I think you work that function as well. But I now know that I could have had it. And the only way I would know is to have a blood test with, to see if I have those antibodies. So there's just a lot that we don't know.
Yes.
The other thing that the governor mentioned today too was, and we, I think our compatriot, Silverman Alamance, had mentioned a petition to have a, you know, potentially a regional phase in or reopening. And he did mention that again today specifically on one of the questions, I think it was, that that may be a place, that may be part of the plan that he's gonna unveil on who and where. The, the thing that, you know, I would have thought that if we were to do a regional reopening, that we would want to be considered rural. But if you look, I took some of the statistics from the DHHS website. The number of cases, and divided that by population to kind of come up with a percentage of cases to the entire population, and ranked them county by county. Randolph is in the top 20.
We're number 12.
This is just on this basis. And if you look at the other counties in our adjoining, Chatham is high. It came in number two because of the processing plant primarily. Montgomery was 30, Davidson was 38, Moore was 46, Guilford was 47, and Alamance was 54. And if you look at the Piedmont Triad, if they were open, the Piedmont Triad is a region. We're still the highest if you add in. Davie's 56, Forsyth is 57.
We're, we're third behind Guilford and Forsyth, if you.
Did it cases or?
That's the number of cases divided by their population. So it kind of gets a percentage of the population.
Per capita.
Per capita. So, I was thinking it may be a regional reopening that we wouldn't be tied with Guilford or some of these others, but we're actually not performing as well. Yeah, yeah.
Our numbers put us there. Of course, a lot of these numbers are coming from these multiple cases in a single location. I mean, if you looked at the map of where the locations were, Arxdale, two of those that were brought back over there came, a couple of folks that didn't, lost their job, they went to Chatham County, went to work in the poultry plant, and brought him back to Arxdale.
A lot of it eastern is, yeah.
Yes. And the nursing home, that was 178 people potentially there, 78 clients or patients and a staff of 100. Now, who was, now we've got one in a child's nursery. Who said that today? Is that right, Ham?
Yes.
Have one, pardon.
We have a, we have one in a, in a child daycare center.
Worker?
Yes.
Worker.
A worker brought it in to a child daycare center.
Well, we've been able to keep some of our childcare centers open because people that are working in essential businesses need daycare.
And I don't mean to imply that people just don't care.
I know, I know.
A lot of it is asymptomatic, they don't know.
That's right, that's right.
Well, I think overall, once it's been identified, we haven't had the explosion like the detention center, likes gone on down in Wayne County.
Right.
And once it's been identified, it's pretty much been able to, to control it. But we have been fortunate, there hasn't been, I know some of the industries have had some outbreaks here and there, but it seems like that we've been able to control it once we've identified it. So we've been fortunate in that respect.
Let me ask a question. You were talking about having a call meeting. I think we pretty well need to have that on the table almost as a minutes notice on anything. Because we don't know what's gonna happen, and we don't know exactly where the governor's gonna go with some of this stuff. And it seems to me that we're, we're trying, you know, we've got to make decisions based on what is given to us. So I think, I think it's highly appropriate.
We could set a meeting for next Monday.
Yeah. We've got to, we've got to stay flexible, in my opinion.
But the one thing I, I think the public doesn't understand is the governor's order is umbrella, is an umbrella over us, and we don't have the authority. All our authority comes from the state. We are a creature of the state. And so we don't have the authority to, in my opinion, to override what the governor's.
We don't, but the.
We can, we can contest it, but we don't have the authority. I think a lot of our folks think that the commissioners can come in and say, okay, we're gonna do away with this order. And I don't think that we can, can do that. From the standpoint of being a creation of the state, we can protest, but I don't, we don't have the authority, I don't believe.
Under Dillon's rule, we don't. That's what I'm saying. Anything that we would do, that means less restrictive than what the governor does, we basically are doing it on our, not without proper authority.
Defiance to the governor.
Yes.
Well, I mean, obviously, I mean, y'all already read the resolution or whatever, and we are close enough that you know how I feel about it. I mean, I feel like most of the restrictions that the governor's talked about are unconstitutional. Now, you may be right, I don't know if that gives us the right to say we're not gonna do that. And I don't know what happens then. I don't know if there's some action the governor could take to do something to Randolph County. But I mean, I do feel like the restrictions, especially on who's essential, who's not essential, who can do business, you know, and places of worship, and how that's controlled, is completely unconstitutional, not in the U.S. Constitution, but the North Carolina Constitution. And then I think it carries on over to the U.S. Constitution. But I just feel strongly that we need to make a statement to Raleigh and to the governor's office to say, you know, Randolph County needs to get back to work. We need to figure out some way to ease this. And you know, maybe like you said, I mean, I'm hopeful that maybe tomorrow Cooper comes in and, you know, things change and things are starting to be eased, and we can start dipping our toe in the water. That'd be wonderful, I wouldn't like, that'd be awesome. But I don't know if it's gonna happen, so maybe you're right. We need to be ready to talk about that if things don't ease up. But, I mean, I could spend 20 minutes talking about how terrible I feel for salon owners and barbers. Just that one category of the economic impact of you cannot make a living for at least, what, six weeks now? Is that right? And then I don't know how much longer that's gonna be if it's in phase two. So if you're a business owner and it's your sole income, you cannot make a living, have no way to pay your bills for two months? I feel bad because today might be too late. Now, you know, again, I don't know what we can do about that. But the gist of this body of it is, I mean, is my request through this to the governor is, let Randolph County make some of these decisions, give us some local control of. When this thing first started, everybody was in shock, the governor made some decisions, you know, I'm fine with that, that's okay, because something had to be done, and we had to figure out what was going on and kind of get control of it. But now that we're this far down the road, Randolph County's done a great job of handling things here. You know, and our law enforcement EMS and health department have responded adequately, you know, more over and above, and not just adequately, and taking care of things, you know, we're controlling situations in places. But I would just like to request, now, you know, he didn't have to take a request, you didn't have to read it. But you know, that's my request, is let Randolph County have some of the local control back. And you know, I've even talked to our DA, Andy Gregson, about it. I mean, we all know how he feels about it. I mean, he also feels like this is unconstitutional. And I don't know that he'd prosecute any case that came before under this EO stuff that came before him. He said he wouldn't, you know, and I fully support that. You know, and I don't think anybody, law enforcement's running around closing any businesses that want to try to open up. But there's a process. Some people are following that DOR recommendation, sending in requests, see if they're necessary, get some guidelines from the state. That's a proper process to follow. But just sooner than later, I just can't imagine if this does go on for another week and in another two or three weeks, and we're on into June, and I'm sitting here with business owners and people, small business people all over the county, and churches wanting to get back to some kind of normalcy. And for the business economic side, I don't know what that does. I mean, if I was completely shut down for two months, that's it. I mean, I'd be retiring, I don't want to be working in Walmart, I don't know, one or the other. But, you know, it's just an impossible scenario. And then the constitutionality of the places of worship, that's a no compromise for me. I feel like it's completely unconstitutional just based on the North Carolina Constitution. And like the minister in Arxdale that called us, you know, I think when I talked to him, I said, amen, God bless you, brother, I hope you have a great service and just be careful. And they took all kinds of precautions, I know that he explained to me at that church. So I trust our people to be responsible, and I trust Larry Randolph County to lead this through this stuff. I just don't know if I trust, at this point, the state to keep us under this thumb of, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. I want it to be under control. And I don't pretend to know any of the details of the medical part. But I do know business owners call me every day and tell me how they're dying. And that breaks my heart. And churches call me every day and talk about how they want to get back to their normal worship schedule and their normal situation, and that breaks my heart. And I took a note to uphold those two constitutions, the North Carolina and the U.S. Constitution. And the line for me is, it's completely unconstitutional anyway. But I don't know where that leaves you on the resolution, I mean, there's a couple of details there. But the biggest part of it is, I'm just saying let Randolph County take control of our own destiny here and let us make some wise decisions and changes. I mean, you look at the example that Mark gave us of senior adults. I mean, it's a pretty complicated business model, all the things that you're doing. And we even got some answers of the things that they put in place to be able to still operate and provide those services for our people. There are small business owners and churches that would do that too. We're just not allowing them the opportunity to do it. But I think he was a great example. I mean, because, you know, they had to make things work, and they did. I mean, the RCATs is running every day and taking the people to dialysis. They're putting people on a bus, getting people off a bus, delivering people to a hospital, bringing them back home. That's pretty complicated. Anyway, so, but I think you're a good example of, you know, some putting our toe in the water before the water's so cold we can't get in.
Ken, the only thing about the resolution, and I spoke to Ben today, you know, we're, we're in this new normal, but we're having a, a virtual meeting or whatever you call it. And the public is not here. This was not, this was not proposed and in our agenda packet that we put out. We changed it right at the last minute Friday to take out that one item, which we did not want to do, as far as making people come to work. But I think under robust rules of order, we couldn't do this, we shouldn't again. Because it wasn't publicized, it wasn't submitted with our agenda. Now, to have a call meeting, and that's put out there as a, as a discussion or an item, then we do it. We can take, we can react, act on it. Either way, one way or not, but it's, but it's out there for everybody to know that that's what we're, that's exactly what we're considering.
What's the notice requirement? Forty, forty-eight hours?
Ben, you wanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, we could, like I said, we could set a meeting for next Monday, and.
Mr. Chairman, it is a 48-hour requirement, it's my understanding. And it's my understanding that this resolution, as it's on your tables tonight, hasn't been advertised yet. The proposal of a possible call meeting next Monday, that's the first I've heard of that, and that's fine. It does concern me that this hasn't been published. If I heard Mr. Johnson's, the reading of his emails correctly, it sounds to me like some of those emails were actually referencing some of this. That's the way I interpreted that. I think that's appropriate. I think everybody should have an opportunity, you know, to, to see this resolution and to submit emails, like some of them have already done so. And this is a very volatile issue. And I do think we, we talk about and we preach transparency. And if we're going to say that, we have to say that even when it's uncomfortable for us. And if it's something that we feel very, very strongly about, and we think this is something, you know, we have to use that, that guide when it's something, even when it's something that we want to, that we believe in very strongly. So I'm glad to hear that a meeting, a called meeting next Monday. I mean, obviously, I think that's a much quicker response than having to wait another month. And so I think that would be a good idea, and it would give everybody the opportunity to, to provide feedback to the, to Mr. Johnson's office so that, so you guys can, can look at that.
No, wait a minute, let's back this little wagon up a little bit here. Because I understand what it said, I'm just a girl from Moore County, okay? That's all.
That's not what he was saying.
That's not what he said, isn't it?
He was saying, I'm just a dumb old pharmacist, but what do I know?
Well, yeah, there you go. Well, I'm just a dumb old teacher, what do I know? It was my understanding that we're not setting a meeting yet.
I'm just saying, that's a part, that.
It's my understanding that.
After the governor takes action, puts. After the governor takes action, puts some of the things that we want in place, what else is out there, and then do we want to address it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, I heard of the possibility of the meeting, that's the first time I've heard that.
Well, it's the first time it's come up.
That's the first time I've heard of that.
Unless you're talking.
But what all I'm saying is that I believe it would be appropriate for people to be able to see this and have time to look at it and to provide feedback or comments to the county before it comes to a vote.
Well, if, if it's going to be considered.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's going to be considered.
Whenever that is, whether it's this coming Monday in two weeks or next month, whenever that is.
Thank you, appreciate your comments there. And your point about transparency is well taken, you know, I've been critical of, you know, people not being transparent, and so, you know, it would be hypocritical of me to say that, you know, let's, you know, not do that. So I appreciate your point there, that's well taken, thank you. Having said that, I do think that's a reasonable compromise, being able to put this out, you know, correct that little line item that I talked about there that was inadvertently left on there, and consider something, but you know, we have, maybe.
We haven't had a chance. I didn't see the, until 11 o'clock today.
I didn't see it.
So we can take, look at it too, I mean.
And I guess, you know, I can ask the chairman for clarification, so the, so we may have an announcement by Cooper tomorrow.
By Friday.
And we know we'll probably have an announcement on Thursday or Friday, because that's where we're rolling up on the other dates. And so knowing that those two things are coming, you know, and what you're saying is, if we could set that date and go ahead and put that on as a date to consider something, then if he lifts everything and we move to phase three, no problem, we can cancel our meeting. If nothing really changes, we're already talking about it anyway. Because we can always cancel a meeting. There's no guideline for that, correct?
Right.
Right, so, yeah, so, yeah, yeah, well, we've done it before. Yeah, we've, we've done it in the past two months.
What would happen though if you had comments that came in after you called the meeting? I mean, would that be, I mean, before, it's always been a live hearing, so you'd have input, but if you get input to a meeting that's canceled?
It becomes canceled. Well, I mean, we, there was recently a meeting that we canceled, what was the meeting we canceled?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, we would appreciate the comments, that's fine.
Right, right. I just think that's an unusual situation we hadn't run into before.
Yeah. And I, you know, that's, I think, that's a great idea, let's put that out there.
Well, I think it's a great idea, this is an old country boy over here.
Let's see, clarify one more time, what's the idea?
The what, the idea?
Yes. Well, we will set a meeting that we might meet and we might not.
We're going to set a meeting to discuss this issue on Monday at 6 o'clock.
We would take, we would set a meeting to discuss the actions taken by the governor and state and any reaction to that. And then this board votes.
And we get a corrected, up-to-date, clean copy.
Well, like David's point, that they might want to do a little wordsmithing there, so.
Right.
Depending on how far he moves.
Because I, I agree with David, I, I haven't had time to really study this.
I know what I'm saying.
And rather than making a hasty decision on it, I'd rather we do this, and Monday seems like a, seems like a reasonable time to say. Because we can get in some of the changes and/or no changes if the case may be.
I mean, somebody might want it to be stronger than this.
Who's going to make the decision to cancel if need be? Would that be chairman?
I, well, I would talk to you all, I mean, yes, I mean, if I, yeah, that's, and if I probably need to make that into form of a motion if you're going to recommend that, is that right?
Well, I'm just, in other comments, you know, a lot, a lot of publicity came to that Gaston County ordinance that they passed. Well, that, that was just a political, by the chairman of their board, I think he did it under their state of emergency, and then his full board rescinded the whole thing. But even then, with what they did, they left every social distancing, spacing, number of people, they left every bit of that in that resolution. The only thing changed is they just opened some things for business. But they couldn't have more than 10, they couldn't have the only 15 in those limited cases. None of that was changed in, the only one that was really different was one Alamance County did. And I, I know kind of how some things played out in Guilford County politically, and I don't know that we, you know, that wouldn't be a real good region for us. I called Alamance County one.
Well, you know, I mean, I like the regional idea, and we've talked about that, I don't know where it fits.
I called Steve Carter out, I said, did y'all have any discussion about what that map might look like? And he said, oh, no, we're going to leave that to the state. So.
Where we, where do we?
Talking just a line here with the borders of Randolph County.
What, I'm sorry?
I'm good with the borders of Randolph County, I don't have to add any other county. I mean, I care about Chatham County, but for my.
Well, I understand, I understand too, you don't want to have 100 different rules and regulations, there's got to be some consistency between counties.
Which is difficult, but I just, these 145,000 people, they're begging to go back to work in church.
I understand, but, but you're going to have, it could lead to a lot of confusion and some unanticipated consequences if, if everybody has it, it's like, it's just like the states, every state's different, and you go from one state to the next, you can imagine going from one county to the next, it could be real confusing, so, we'll see.
On something that's not even being part of this discussion is looking at the recommendation of our health department and looking at our, studying our statistics and making a decision. You talk about restricting fundamental rights, but the law has to be driven by compelling interest. And I would say this is a compelling interest myself. So can limiting, so we have to ask ourselves, can limiting a fundamental right be permitted? Is there a compelling interest to do that? And I would say heretofore, there's been a compelling interest to do that. Now, nobody loves to go to church anymore than I do and worship. That has not been restricted. You may not commit inside that building shoulder to shoulder, but people are having the parking lot churches, it's online, limiting religious freedom, yeah, that's taking place in the Sudan, that's taking place in Iran. We don't know what religious persecution is about in this country.
I think we do now. I think we do now, because this is it.
No.
Yeah, it absolutely is. It's a constitutional right, protected by our constitution, US and North Carolina.
We are allowed to worship.
The minister down the street ought to be able to worship in church the way he wants to worship in his country.
You have not worshipped since this shut.
I have worshipped, and I long for the day that I can worship in the pew inside my church building.
I do, too.
Which I have the freedom to do in North Carolina.
I do, too, and I think our ministers will work to make some changes. I've talked to some that already have plans in place for what they can do to abide by the safety and health protocol. But heretofore, there's been a compelling interest, because we haven't known enough to know what to do.
Well, I just think it comes down to, do you trust the people and the citizens of this country, or do you trust the government to make all your decisions for you? I trust the people.
So, so you're saying?
I mean, but, you know, would you disagree?
That this North Carolina statute right here gives, says that.
Is that the emergency management statute?
Public health and safety laws are given wide latitude, and they can override others for the health and safety and well-being of the public. So you're saying you don't trust the data that's come to us from the experts and from our national health department, from our state health department, from CDC, you don't trust any of that?
Not all of it, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Not, and not to the extent, now, I do, well, I did admit, when we started the crisis, the governor and the state needed to do something when we took action. But we're six, eight months, eight weeks down the road now, and, you know, now it's becoming more evident that, you know, I do feel like there are some constitutional problems.
All right, you want to set a meeting for next Monday at 4 o'clock?
Absolutely. I'd make that motion.
Oh, something at 6?
No, that's fine, 6 o'clock.
I'd rather do it at 6.
6 is good.
6 o'clock next Monday.
That's pretty nebulous.
Pardon?
I said, I think there's a lot of nebulous.
Well, we have a motion.
Stuff here about a meeting.
That we will set a meeting for next Monday afternoon at 6 o'clock to discuss any possible changes to the reopening policy presented by the state.
I'll second that motion.
All right? Those in favor say aye? Aye. Those no?
No.
All right. Hold on one. Okay.
I would also like to ask that if we're going to have that meeting, and if we feel like we might be considering a statement of some kind, that every proclamation we've been given from these different counties be made a public, be made, be put on the website for the public to look at. They need to see everything we have seen at this point in time. I also would like the real one, the official one from Gaston County posted on our website, not the one that was not signed by anybody anywhere, but the official.
And, and if we get some in from other counties that just do various things, we can add those, I think it's a great idea.
There has been a one, even, even Alamance County called for social distancing, limiting the number, just do it regionally.
Following health and safety protocol that's established.
Yes, every one of them has done that. So that, that's.
And I, I think it's appropriate, because so many people have gotten bits and pieces of these resolutions, you know, over the internet and this and the other, they, they've drawn, they've drawn their own conclusions about what's going on, because I know you guys, I've surely got emails, and what's wrong with you people, can't you do this type of thing, too? Yeah, but read what they did and find out that it really didn't change anything anyway. So I agree, you know, make it available that people can see and draw their own conclusions.
I think because a county adopts a resolution, they think that they are just opening the door, and that, that is not the case.
And, and I think a lot of our citizens think that we have that ability.
We have the authority, but we don't.
And we don't, we don't.
Anything that we do would be without authority.
I also think we would be remiss if we did not thank our legislators in Raleigh for the work that they did on Saturday on both sides, particularly ours for Randolph County, because they always represent us well. But for all of them on, for the bipartisan effort that went into that, we still have strong feelings about, you know, the budget, Medicaid expansion, all of these different things, none of that went away. But they came together for the good of the citizens, and that's what we have to do. So in that one day, they came together to spend $150 million?
No.
Is that?
No.
Billion.
Well, it was one of these federal, federal bodies.
All right, but in Raleigh, I'm talking about the statement.
Yeah, that was the statement, one and a half billion dollars.
Okay, well, they came together to, to determine what the COVID relief bill would.
And some of that money will come to Randolph County.
Yes, it sure will.
Well, I think you saw that today at the news conference, you had, I'll call them the three bears, you had the governor and the two, the leadership of both the houses. My, my concern is that we don't, they showed very much, it seems to be a very bipartisan effort, and I think it's going to take that in this situation. My fear is if we do a whole, I don't want to poke that bear.
That's why.
And I don't want to poke the wrong bear, and I don't want the bear to take the stick away from us and start beating us over the head with it. So.
I agree.
I think we need to let things settle a little bit, let our legislators work with the governor's office, see what they can come up with, and hopefully we won't have to meet next week.
I agree. All right. Any other business to come for this board tonight? I have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, without discussion.